Okay, let's call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 8th, 2019. Can you call, Earl, please?
Member Rick Carey.
Here.
Member David Hutchins.
Here.
Member Penny Kosinski.
Present.
Chair Mark Marsh.
Here.
Alternate member Neil Henigan.
Here.
Okay, let's stand for the Plaid of Allegiance. The Plaid of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any comments on the last minutes, minute, meeting minutes of March 11th?
On page 12, under the public comments, I think it's just a typo, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lines down, it says the height should be 100 square feet and the height should not be above 8 feet. I think that's probably size, not height.
Okay.
Right there.
Okay.
And I have one on page 6, I believe, is a... This would be under page 6, 3, the second paragraph, second to the bottom line. At the end of that line, it says, "New subdivisions with a park delegation of 600," I think it might be dedication, "of 600 square feet." You know, like what, just check that.
Any other comments? We spoke a lot, I know that. And now I, this is one way to shift me up. Okay, all right, let's move on to...
Mark, you just need a motion and a second.
Oh, sorry.
To approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the minutes as corrected.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to action items. Would you like Brian to...
Well, actually, I think this would probably be something Marty would go ahead and start.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Good morning. For the record, Marty Meyer, Urban Design Kill Day Studios. A couple months ago, he asked me to take a look at the conceptual development review process, which his board participates in, and making comments to the building official on single duplex homes. And looking at taking advantage of the expertise on this board and to provide more teeth to this process, I have, we have looked at the changes in making to the conceptual development review process. This process, we're proposing that would, instead of making comments to the building official, this board would make those kind of determinations on those types of building permits that you would now normally see at conceptual development review. So the building official granting approval, this board will be doing that. And during the past discussions, there were several things that we looked at, that the board asked for us to look at. One was the 50 percent threshold, which would be anything that increases the size of the house by 50 percent, or the construction costs exceed 50 percent of the total cost of the house. It would come before your, the board. We looked at that and we looked at other types of measures, what would be a good criteria for bringing certain conditions to this board. And we stayed with the 50 percent. We looked at it several times. It's an industry-type standard, it's, when you look at non-conforming structures and other types of aspects of the code, that 50 percent is a standard that's been used all the way around, it's been legally justified. So we're proposing keeping that. However, we are adding a criteria where if the building official, if it doesn't meet that 50 percent threshold, but the building official believes what's been presented doesn't meet the criteria that's already in your code, he can bring that application to this board where it's consideration determination. Through that criteria, we've, on section 6356, we go into that, we've also added to that criteria, it's that same criteria that you use when you give comments to the building official. We've added a height, the height and scale, the proposed structure should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And I think that's probably gonna, if it all goes through, cause an amendment in some of the development applications that would come into the building official, that where they would indicate those adjacent building heights. And so you can make that determination. Also, that the architectural style and elements of the addition is consistent with the rest of the house, pretty basic thing, but it's good to have it written down, and that all proposed structures would be consistent with the town's land development regulations and the conference of plan. We did look at the Palm Beach section regarding similar and dissimilar buildings. I've attached that in your memos. We went back and forth on that, and the more we looked into it, we liked the idea, but if, I think if we tried to adopt the similar, dissimilar, we need to be looking at other aspects of the Palm Beach code to flesh that out, to make that really workable on a legal basis. One last thing, we have added an appeal process, so if a homeowner is here and there is a decision here, the homeowner or someone within 300 feet of that home, or a party can appeal to the next available town commission meeting. So that's the proposed changes on the conceptual development review, it no longer be conceptual, it'll just be development review process. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any commission has had...
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
These are most directed at the town attorney, so Brian, if you'll bear with me, on the additional language in the first paragraph of 6356, it says above the 50 percent threshold, and uses the word "may." Would it be more appropriate to use "shall" there?
No, because what, what this is intended to do, if, let's say that the building official, let's say somebody submits something, and it doesn't trip the 50 percent threshold, it's not new, you know, it's not brand-new construction. However, in the building official's determination, that what they're asking, or what they're proposing, is something that this board, that he thinks, or he or she thinks, in their opinion, that this is something that should come in front of this, this commission, then the building official would have the authority to do that, to bring them, you know, in front of you. And I, and we just kind of have that language because you never know, you know, where it's kind of like, well, it looks like it meets the code, but I'm just not sure, so let me bring it in front of you all and see what you think about it, and do that. So that's, that's why we kind of need to have the "may" in there.
I guess I don't understand that fully, but I defer to you. It seems like to me that he's, that you're asking him that he's to do this review of the items below. So by saying it "may," he may do the review, he may not do the review?
Okay, no, and I guess, and maybe that's what we can, we can kind of clear up there, is no, he's going to do the review, period. However, in, in his review, there may be something that is proposed, that he's not sure if it actually meets the code or not, the way it's presented, the way it's drawn, the way, I don't know, it's, it's just one of those kind of gray areas, where kind of likes, well, it looks like it might, but it, it may not, so I would like to have this board kind of sign off on that, because basically, I don't want to make the, you know, maybe I don't want to make the call that, yeah, I think that's in compliance with their code, where, you know, I'm not sure if it is or not. And so that's, that's what, we're trying to give the building official the ability, if there's something that's just, I don't want to say different, but something that is, that if, he's not sure if it meets the code, and I guess you could always say, well, if it doesn't meet the code, then he denies it, and what's the point in that? You know, that's, you know, I think, and I've seen this in other places, too, where, you know, sometimes things are just presented where it's kind of difficult to tell, well, does it meet the code or not? So, and that's the reason we kind of have this language, we can certainly word it differently, that's what we're kind of after, though, to...
And I understand the example you're giving, I'm kind of dropping back to where the consensus of this commission was last time, that we'd like to review almost everything, unless it's kind of minor. And the 50 percent threshold makes sense so long as we still have things looked at with a lot of scrutiny, and the, and things come forward to us that don't fit.
Yeah, I think, no, that's, that's the goal, I guess, but I think at the staff level, in this case, with Wayne's position, you know, he's really the keeper of, he's receiving all these applications. So what this allows us, or him to do, is if he doesn't feel comfortable in his judgment, and he's not in that role to look at, you know, we're the ones enforcing or reviewing the criteria, if he's not comfortable, I think it's, it's a great safety gap to just have there, so...
I feel like it's semantics, because you're, you're saying in this sentence, if he doesn't agree, if he, if he's concerned, you're already saying that. So if he's concerned about something, then he shall bring it to the board, not he may bring it to the board.
Right. Yeah, I, I...
You understand?
Yeah, I can see, I leave it to the legal consular.
I think if you parse that sentence with a will or a shall, it's still discretionary.
Yeah, it's...
It is, because he...
The "may" just makes it, well, ambiguous to me. I think I agree with Rick, that...
Okay, well, that's, that's fair. I just reminded that we've suffered in the past, because that person or that role has been, you know, given that responsibility, and it's, it's not a fair burden to put on one individual, so however he gets to us, or that person, he or she, we can come up with the language. Brian, what do you think?
Well, I guess I'm, I guess I'm understanding the, I guess the kind of context of what Mr. Carey's question is, that even though, you know, and I agree with you, at, at the last meeting, that you all did give direction to kind of say, look, we would like to see just about everything come in front of this board. I think when staff went back there and with, with Mr. Minor, it was kind of looked at like, well, can we still try to stick with the 50 percent threshold? I guess the, I guess the crux of the question is, do you, you know, is the 50 percent something that, you know, the board is looking at like, no, we just want to do away with that because we want to see every little thing come in front of you? And I think the problem that staff was having, and I think Mr. Minor, I don't want to speak for him, but it's kind of like, where do you draw the line on when something comes in front of this board, if you don't use thresholds that I, I think Mr. Minor has kind of mentioned earlier, that are kind of common in the industry? I understand what you're saying, and so I guess it's really up to the direction of the board on, on how you want us to proceed with this. We, we did listen to what you said, and we tried to, to come up with some different avenues or different things, and I, I'm just not, I mean, once again, I don't want to put words in Mr. Minor's mouth, but I, I don't know how we could somehow, unless you just use an arbitrary dollar amount.
Yeah, I, I, Rick, I don't think, I don't recall, anyway, us mandating that everything or...
No, I, I think I overstated that.
And I would never support that, not only being in the business, I think it's an imposition on homeowners, you know, if they want to change the color of their house, or a window, change that. The threshold that's been mentioned here is, is universal in the industry, in the towns. I just want to clarify one thing on the threshold. The threshold of 50 percent of value is on a appraised value, not a necessary pop-up or tax. So it gives a little bit more leverage or flexibility to that particular owner. We all look at our tax things and see that our houses are not worth anything, so...
And we can certainly add that language, like, you know, as shown by a certified or licensed appraiser.
Yeah, a legitimate market value appraisal.
Exclusive of the land.
Exclusive, building only.
Right, yes.
And that is standard.
I think the concern I have here is that the former town manager told me that one of the local builders that's done a number of buildings here in this town comes to every meeting with staff with his attorney. And putting the building official in the position of arguing, you know, does this meet this criteria, you know, the building official says, I believe I'd like to take it before planning and zoning, and he and his attorney are there arguing, you're wrong, it doesn't have to go before planning and zoning. And we're back to some of the issues we have in hand right now. Now, the building official just said, well, you know, we'll see you at planning and zoning, then that's fine. But, you know, we don't, we don't want backroom bullying to go on, is exactly what I'd say.
I think we understand, I think at that point, it would be the manager's position to referee that situation. Yeah, I, again, we don't want to have staff be the recipient of strong-arm tactics or whatever. But I think it's just a good safety net, and it, you know, they're not trained, and no offense to Wayne, you know, necessary in aesthetics or what's appropriate, it's, he's more in a building code setting than a, than a planning.
If I can say, I think the way this thing was recrafted does a good job on it, and I like your comment about, let's make sure we have the appraised value, so we have a good working point and no confusion. But I really don't think that this board should be in the business of micromanaging every decision that homeowners go through in this town. There's, you know, we have to, we, we're not, we're not, that's not our assignment, I don't think.
And as a point of reference, Brian, again, or Tracy, I think the town commission has concern, you know, there was some pushback initially in how, you know, deep this review is going to go. I think, I think this is a great starting point. I think it doesn't get into, as I said, colors or anything, it's really more of what impact physically onto the land use items that it has on a neighborhood or an adjacent property, which I think is a fundamental thing, which goes back to comprehensive land use.
And I'll just add to that, too, this is the first step in the process. You will see in the coming months that when you review these applications, we'll be talking about changing more codes so that it gets more objective.
Yeah. Another question. When 6356, this verbiage was developed, did you happen to look at 64.1, Section A, Purpose and Intent, where there's also a statement concerning relevance of looking at, I believe it says, certain elements of human scale and proportions when we're looking at compatibility issues?
Yes.
Are you aware of that section?
Yes.
Are you aware of that section?
Yes, we're actually looking at that, I have it in front of me right now. That's one of the things that we're going to bring to you, I believe, next month.
Later on.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
If I could just, sorry, on the dissimilar and similar, which I kind of promoted, I agree with Marty, you know, the town of Palm Beach is, has a lot of connected criteria, but I still would like to promote some fashion of having, you know, that watermark reference, because it's not only dissimilar, it's similar. If we start to get cookie-cutting development in this town, it's just as negative as, you know, something that's so outlandish.
Where did you find a conflict that, that made this incompatible?
It relates to cubic content and all kinds of technical...
No, I'm just talking about the limited amount that was brought over here in the bold...
I was looking at the similar and dissimilar, and their descriptions of that, and then as part of their criteria on what is similar and dissimilar, it references other sections of their review process that is not part of our town process.
Okay. So we can't see that here, and we'll just...
Yeah, you start bringing more and more over to the town that, I, once again, I agree, I think this is a good first stop, start. I think those issues of similarity and dissimilarity are going to work, it's where we're going to find a way to address that, that works for this town, you know, independently, rather than bringing something else in that may not work here. Okay?
What's the definition of compatible? Is there anything within the definition? Because 6356D puts in that should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, is there something that can say, but not...
I think, I think that's why we're here, we're, we're kind of, this is where it will be discussed, in the boat-made direction. I don't think we can write it in law or code.
I like the compatibility.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this first subject? What do we need to, to trace?
Public comment?
Oh, sorry. Any public comment?
Just very briefly, on the, on that, my permission, like, five angle, on the value, I think you need to make sure that there's some sort of a threshold before you start getting into bringing in an appraiser. Because the appraiser, to get an appraisal done, you're spending hundreds of dollars trying to get an appraisal in order to show that the window that you're trying to exchange for $150 is not within that code, so if you're doing these appraisal things, I ran into a similar problem in Lake Worth the other day, that's why I'm, you know, kind of...
Gunshot.
A little shy about this whole thing, so just make sure that you take that in...
Yeah, Martin, what, what happens is, I think you're, you're educated in the business enough, the threshold is, is an appraised value, which the town mandates. The FEMA now overrides all the building criteria, and they have total control, and they mandate that that kind of appraisal is provided, so I think...
We're coming back to the, you know, if you paint, if I paint my house, and the paint on the house costs $150, do I need to bring an appraisal for the...
No, no, that's what we're saying, we're saying, if you're getting close to 50 percent, and the building official says, boy, you're doing more, appears to be more than 50, then it can be challenged, and...
So just make sure that that is part of the...
No, no, I mean, anything under that is, and changing windows and actually repair items are, repair items, I don't know if that addresses repair items, because that's an important thing.
If you're going from a regular window to an impact window, I think that's...
Let me, I'm sorry, I'm a little, I know enough to be dangerous here. Again, FEMA is the governing body of all this coastal area right now. The building department takes a second fiddle. And under the FEMA criteria, you're exempt on repair items. If you have a deficient structure that needs repair, window improvement, anything to enhance the...
Make it safer.
Safer, you're exempt. So I think, I'm sure Wayne can pull up that shopping list as what the exemption is. So it's not as severe as it appears.
Does that include roofs?
Yeah.
Roofs as a repair item?
Yeah, they, what, what they'll do is they'll deduct that from the 50 percent calculations and basically allow you to do life-saving items, which is not going into the 50 percent threshold.
Correct. Any other public comment? Okay, we don't need a motion in the...
Yes, we do, we need a motion, we need a motion and a second to recommend approval to the town commission, so it will be forwarded to them.
Right, and if I can just mention to you all, I think we'll probably try to add a little bit more language on the cost to clarify that, on the appraised value, maybe, in the code. We may kind of take a look at, on the exclusion of repair costs, and there's a couple of Scrivener's errors and a couple of the paragraphs that I need to correct, anyway. So if, whoever wants to make that motion, if you want to approve it as such, then that would give us the ability to make those minor changes and move it forward.
May I ask one more question before we do that? Because we, we very specifically mentioned colors, because it's one of the things that the commission has said to us multiple times, is they don't want us dictating colors. But that's what number C starts with, is colors. So are they going to kick it back strictly on that?
Not necessarily. If they don't, if they don't want to see the colors in there, then they could strike it out. Okay.
I think that's only in there if something's so incongruous with...
Totally agree.
Then it's not a matter, if you're going from beige to white, the purple range may be a little difficult.
Do we want to see it again before it goes to the commission?
I'd like the chances of this going, I don't want to batter it around too much, or bar it around too much. I don't know if, how the feel or the mood of the commission is, but I think we've come a long way.
Like to see it go forward.
I'd like to see it go forward. It's a good question, I just, I don't want to regurgitate too much.
You're going to get in this summer without any...
Anybody? Rick looks, Michelle.
I'm happy to make the motion if it incorporates what Brian said.
The, the minor edits that we will make, okay.
I shall second.
Okay, call her, Earl, please.
You can, you can... All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. The next item is code amendments regarding flat roofs and limiting parapet heights. Brian, you want to take us up?
Oh, well, this is Marty again.
Oh, Marty, yeah, sorry, I'm not used to see that.
Good morning, once again, Marty Minor, for the record. A couple months ago, we had a really good discussion regarding parapets and flat roofs. As you remember, flat roofs can only take up 15 percent of the total roof area of houses in the town. However, there was a desire to require parapets for those flat roofs, and to limit those sizes for those parapets, so you wouldn't have large walls being created above a flat roof. So some of the recommendations during that workshop came out, that the parapet should be limited to 24 inches above the flat roof tie beam, and cover all aspects of the flat roof slope. The parapet should extend around each flat roof, excluding decks and patios. Within the code revisions you see here, the maximum permitted pitch has been changed to 10 to 12, from 14 to 12, to rise the rung. 24-inch parapet, and we also added rooftop mechanical equipment shall be screened on all sides, so if you have mechanical equipment up on your roof, it has to be screened. That screening at a minimum will go to the height of the equipment, and if it happens to be on a, a flat roof, the maximum, it can be above the parapet screened, is 36 inches. So that would be the, for instance... So that would be the, for instance, an air conditioning unit. If you have it on a flat roof but have it screened, that would still be the maximum. And we looked at various sizes. It's not necessarily something that's encour, we're encouraging, but it's something we want to, you know, look at and regulate, so it doesn't become an issue. We'd rather have those units to be up on the ground.
Why, why don't we mandate that? I, I don't understand why with the lot sizes that we have and the fact that we're only having partial flat roofs anyway, that we have to have any mechanical on the roof.
I think we should give the option rather than mandate. It can't be on the roof.
I mean, it's a hazard to start with.
Well, I, the only I can think of is, you know, for those who have larger kitchens or, you know, cooks, chefs, you know, if you want to put a exhaust fan...
Well, let them keep it within the twenty-four inches of the parapet extension. And, and if they can't do that, they need to put it on the ground. I don't see why, why we should be worrying about screening things just because someone elected to have a flat roof. That should be part of the price of having a flat roof, that you gotta put your mechanical somewhere else.
Go ahead.
Can that exhaust be somewhere else?
Sorry?
Can that exhaust you were just talking about be somewhere else? Or does it need to be above the equipment?
Usually it wants to be at the highest point.
Can I?
And then it has clearances of ten feet from opening, so it, it usually ends up on the highest point. I mean, they're downdraft systems, but commonly, I, I'm just trying to use an example of what I think could be a...
Well, I mean, I mean, but we're, we're gonna legislate everything for a minor exception. And I don't, I don't think that's the kind of things that we're... I think that's what we're trying to avoid here as a group, is all these permissive things that get to go on because, you know, wanting exhaust fan or something.
Can I ask, Wayne, do we have residences here that have something that looks like that?
The, the problem is, people already have mechanical equipment on the roof. And if those individuals have to change out those units, and it's no, and it's, and then they will have to change your system altogether, not just the equipment now. The condensate line now has to be at the ground level, not on the roof, not going up. So the piping, the duct work, that's really why a mandate could be problematic for those situations. Because it's not, because it's no longer, not just, think of new construction going forward, it's also those individuals who have to make changes to those individual rooftop units as they stand currently.
I don't particularly think that we should disadvantage people who have that existing situation. I can see where you're going with it.
I don't either.
And it, is, is it really that big a factor in the town, or would it...
Well, we're seeing...
Suddenly would we see everybody have, you know, thirty-six inch screens, or I, I don't know. But I'm, I'm comfortable with what was written.
It's really sixty inches, isn't it, the two feet plus?
Yes.
Three feet above.
It's a five-foot high structure.
Five foot high, and I, I don't think we should be building a design criteria in there for five foot of screening. I think allowing what exists to be, continue, it's fine. But I don't, I don't think we should create a design criteria that people start designing around, saying, no, I've got the ability to go up to five feet above my, you know, three feet above the parapet, the twenty-four foot parapet. That's a, that's a lot of, and it doesn't define how big of an area. It could be pretty significant.
Fifteen percent of the roof area.
Okay, so it could be pretty significant, right?
Yeah, I think so. I just, there is something there.
So you're making a statement on new construction?
Right.
But if...
And that's what I'm talking about.
It's, okay, all right.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Because I thought Wayne was kind of bringing into the fact that would be, somebody was gonna change their system out, they would be compelled to all of a sudden change everything.
Yeah, we've been trying to drive everything down with the flat roofs, and now suddenly we're gonna allow something as five foot tall in the middle of the...
Well, in new construction.
Correct.
Okay, I can, what do you think?
No, I agree. I, I don't think we should promote any increase to the parapet height. I'm just playing devil's advocate. And I think it's, if the commission so feels, let's have it amended.
For new construction?
For new construction.
Brian, can we grandfather?
Well, I guess, here's my question. Um, when you say new construction, now are you, you know, for a brand-new house, I guess what you're saying is that you would like to ban any mechanical equipment on the roof. I guess that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing. No, no mechanical equipment whatsoever allowed on the roof structure.
We've got a twenty-four inch parapet, so if it...
An exhaust fan will fit behind it, it's one thing, right?
You can recess it too. You can, you can, the mechanical equipment can be recessed down into the floor, basically lowering that hatch.
Um, if you want to speak, let's not get too technical here, all right?
It's just, you know, if somebody wants to put the mechanical equipment desperately on the roof, they can do it as long as they stay within the line of sight of that twenty-four inch parapet. What you do is you take the roof height, you just drop it down. If you have a five-foot equipment, you drop it down by three feet.
It can be in the closet.
And you're, you're perfectly level with the twenty-four inches. And, yeah, it's a good closet, whatever it is. If somebody absolutely wants to do it, it's just a design thing.
Do we use the fifty percent rule as the mandate? Grandfathering the existing, do we use the fifty percent rule?
Well, I guess part of the question is, you, what, what if they, what if they trip the fifty percent threshold but they aren't impacting the roof structure? You know, I mean, it would be one thing if they're, you know, if they're doing something where it impacts the roof structure, and it's kind of like, well, you gotta change it anyway, so go ahead and, and change it all out. But what if they're doing something that is not impacting that at all? Then are you saying that, I mean, at that point in time, I would say that, no, we need to, we kind of need to take this back and rethink it a little bit, if that's the road that you want to go down.
I don't have the answer to that. I just asked the question.
Well, I think, from what we're discussing here, I think there's opposition to increasing it by additional three feet.
Absolutely.
Um, and let's start with the, the parapet as the, the screen. And if, you know, I mean, there're gonna be cases, we can't predict what people are gonna come. But at least if we have something to negotiate or at least compare what's good, then it may be best to do that.
Okay, I guess it's, it's my understanding, and I don't know if Wayne wants to say anything here, but I didn't think we were really increasing it. We were just mandating that no screening has to go all the way around the mechanical structure that our code currently allows to be there now. However, because of the parapet change that we're doing, I understand that could, you know, that, that has some changes there. Do you, I guess, is there the direction that you want us to take this back?
Brian, the problem is, it says equal to the height of the proposed equipment. So if an owner goes and buys a five-foot piece of equipment, just for argument's sake, then I think that's where Wayne would have to say, you know, this is exceeding our twenty-four inch parapet, and at least have that discussion.
Okay, because since it can't extend more than thirty-six inches above the flat roof parapet, then they could, there is, okay. So if we said something that rooftop equipment shall not exceed, shall not extend more than thirty-six inches above the roof structure itself, or something like that, then...
Twenty-four, but it's not thirty-six.
No, no, I, I hear you. Okay.
So it's gotta be twenty-four inches.
Correct.
Not thirty-six.
So I guess if there's any consensus on the direction that...
So, so, just, so I'm clear on this. Are we talking about all roofs, new roofs, new construction, renovations, exceeding a certain amount?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
Um, if, if I can ask the question, are you aware of any buildings out there now? And I think this is, so this is not multifamily, this is just RSF and RSE. Are you aware of any structures out there now, across, okay, that have units? So, okay, so basically, um...
Is there like a state?
Do you want us, do you want us to look at possibly grandfathering something in? Because if they're, I guess, if we were to change it to where they could not go above a parapet, I mean, would, if we made some of those changes, would that impact them replacing like-for-like units? I guess that's my question. And, and maybe that's something we need to think about and come back on.
What are you talking about? There's somebody out there. Which one?
Yeah, I think that would be grandfathering, wouldn't it?
Well, we need to...
If it's not going more than fifty percent.
Right, I mean, we need to possibly put, and I guess that's the direction too. Do you want this only to apply to new construction going forward?
Yes.
The, the restriction.
Unless they exceed the fifty percent.
Okay.
And may I ask one more question, probably semantics again, but any rooftop mechanical equipment shall be screened on all sides from view from the adjacent property. Do we want the word adjacent or the word off-site? Because your perspective from farther away, you see more clearly than if you're standing right next door. I understand you're worried about the neighbors, which is important, but there's also neighbors that are not adjacent.
That's why I was using parapet, the twenty-four inches, because then you don't need to worry about perspective from...
The exit screen.
Okay.
So, um, how do we want to...
I guess, is the direction clear enough that we can move this forward? Because I think our goal here is to get these changes in place so some of the things that are currently being reviewed or about to be reviewed are reviewed under the new criteria. So hopefully our direction is sufficient that we can, that it doesn't have to wait another monthly cycle.
Yeah, we're coming from zero, so let's go.
And I think...
Anything we can get.
There's, there's gonna be a lot of new construction going on in the town, I think, going forward.
Yeah, no, I, I think, is everybody happy with the present?
With the modification, yes.
With the modifications?
Well, I'll just kind of move back here, and I hate to say it, kind of look at Wayne and Marty, because I'm, I'm not quite sure. Um, I, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but I wouldn't feel comfortable if, if you're just going on my knowledge to come back with something without you all looking at it again. I don't know if Marty or Wayne are...
I mean, does it have to say more than mechanical equipment on a flat roof can't exceed the height of the parapet?
That really seems the, the change that we're looking to make from this.
I think that's, that's...
That's how I...
And again, it, it'll be a case by case. If somebody has, you know, they, they can appeal.
Okay, flat roof shall not exceed height of the parapet, and then that this shall apply to, um...
Fifty percent.
Well, it, it shall apply to new construction going forward. It's not going to apply to, to prior construction, so, okay.
But it, under the new construction or what we're about to adopt is the fifty percent?
Fifty percent.
And I guess my question is, if the fifty percent, someone comes in, let's say that they are replacing, I don't know, all of their windows and then doing a few other cosmetic changes to the house or adding it, it is, doing something that does not impact the roof structure, the mechanical equipment, any way, shape, or form, do we, yeah, it's my understanding, you still want to require them to say, no, you need to change this. Because the fifty percent...
No, fifty percent. If they're doing a fifty percent change to the house, then they should be meeting the new criteria.
Yeah, no, and what you just described is what I mentioned on the FEMA. Wayne has that reference of what is exempt in terms of repair. So it's not as imposing as it seems.
Okay, and is it, I guess that's the other question there. Do we need to make reference in that? And I know I'm going back to the prior ordinance, but do we need to, I guess, is it clear in the code that the fifty percent that we're talking about, cost-related, is based on those, the FEMA criteria, the FEMA guidelines where it's not repair? I mean, is that clear? Okay, all right, just wanted to ask that question. Thank you. Okay, so I guess, um...
I'll move the motion.
With, with the changes that you spoke about.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Brian, can I be, since I'm in, one clarification that we already made. The previous conceptual development code. Did we have a notification to neighbors?
Uh, yes, there is one in there.
Three hundred or?
Yes, it's three hundred feet.
Okay, just wanted to check. Thank you.
I think, isn't that correct, Tracy? Because we amended it the last time to provide...
Sorry, I mean, I just, we never mentioned it, and that's a pretty important...
Yes, no, if you look at number, the notice of, don't, not Marty's thing, but the proposed ordinance where it's notice of the development plan review meeting. And then that's where we, we had recently amended that.
Right.
So that's, so there will be notice to the neighbors within the three hundred feet area.
Okay, let's move on to the other item, which is the amendments regarding signs.
And I guess I just want to say, on this particular one, we are not looking for any approvals or anything like that today. This is just to kind of get this in front of you. Uh, you may or may not remember about two years ago, we brought an ordinance very similar to this one in front of you at that time, based on, there were some changes or there were some decisions made, you know, where case law was, was provided that made most municipalities kind of modify their code. And at the time, you know, certain municipalities, I think if you could kind of work through it, a lot of municipalities were trying to do that. And I think the direction given back at that time was kind of the same thing here. Let's see if we can kind of work through it. And I think we have been kind of working through it. However, I believe at this point in time, you know, it's becoming more and more problematic to try to kind of work through our sign code. And so that's the reason this is back in front of you again, to try to get a little bit of, or to try to modify our sign code and where it provides greater clarification and is more consistent with, let's just say, the law of the land out there. And that's the reason this is in front of you. Where the biggest impact that this will have on the town of Ocean Ridge, what we've tried to do is not really impact your permanent signage, which is basically in, in the town is just the signage for, you know, your multifamily housing units, different things like that. So this doesn't really impact them. It is the temporary, or I guess we call them temporary signs. It is the for-sale signs, the realtor signs, the free speech signs, the campaign signs, the contractor signs, all of those type of things. And what has been determined is, in the past, we have always been able to, you know, call out different signs. If you were a real estate sign, you would say, we aren't regulating content because we're just, it's a separate classification. You're a real estate sign, and here's what you, you know, and you can say whatever you want. And it's certain size, certain times it can be out, things like that. If you're a contractor sign, same thing. If you're identification sign, same thing. Um, and what we've been told is basically, no, you're really regulating content, and all of your temporary signs need to, basically, you can regulate the size and the amount and the height and different things like that, but you can't really go much beyond that. So that's what this attempt is meant to do. Now, I know that, you know, what's, I don't know if you've looked in here, just the, the crux of a lot of this is that basically, and I think if you look on page sixteen of nineteen of the ordinance, where, and once again, this is just to start the discussion. So don't anyone take this as, no, this is what, you know, what needs to, you know, what we need to end up with or anything like that. But the maximum number of signs per parcel is like four. Maximum sign area is four square feet. Tracy has some nice signs over there to show you exactly how big that is. And then, you know, maximum height, the number of signs that you can have on the property is four. They have to be fifteen feet apart. Uh, but this would apply to all, and, and this regulates private property. Now, this is not in the public right-of-way, because even under your current code, you can't really have signs in the public right-of-way. So this doesn't change that at all. This just regulates those signs on private property. So I don't know if you all want to kind of think about this. We can, you know, next, at the next meeting or so. This, this will probably be a two or three or longer meeting event, just so you know. And I, I don't know if anyone has any comments right now or questions and...
Okay.
Let me just note, to summarize all of this, really what the commission needs to do is you need to determine what size sign you're comfortable moving forward with, the number you want allowed on a single property, and then if you want to mandate the distance between the signs on a single property. So there are three areas that you really need to look into. I did bring some samples for you so that you could see the different sizes moving forward. That way you're not going into it blindly. Where did this criteria come from?
This criteria actually has been used in some other ordinances that have been adopted around the state. So that's where this, rather than trying to recreate the will, this has been adopted in numerous jurisdictions and other places.
Currently, the size of your real estate signs are forty square inches and this is the size of it. The next size that we have is the three square feet. This is the size of your typical political sign. The size that Brian had written in the ordinance is four square feet and this would be the size of that. That's pretty big.
Actually, I had six square feet to begin with until Tracy beat me up and said, no, are you crazy?
I'm gonna do a cutout for that.
Right, yes, so I'll just full disclosure there. Okay?
Good job, Tracy.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is five, just if you want to go down to five, but anyway, so those were the cutouts so that you could actually see what if you go to...
Yeah, thank you, that's very helpful. That's everything in perspective, obviously.
And Brian, are we approaching on the free speech now with the size realtor sign that we currently have?
Well, realtor signs is not so much, well, when you say free speech, I mean, First Amendment rights. I guess my, part of my concern is that there's a line of cases out there too where if you, let's say that if you were to recommend that we do not go above the forty square inches for all temporary signs. I would be a little concerned about that because if somebody wants to put a sign in their front yard that says, you know, I hate the governor, or I love the governor, or whatever, that might be a little problematic. So that's why I would recommend we need a little bit bigger sign. Now, I understand, of course, by doing that and by making all these signs the same size, you know, then everybody, in my experience, that when you tell people they can use a bigger sign, they generally try to go with the biggest one they can use. So, so that's just, you know, kind of something, I mean, like I say, I'm just kind of putting that out there for people to think about, for you all to, you can kind of be thinking about. And, you know, at the next meeting, you can kind of look around and see the signs that are out there now and...
Sorry, on that same, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to ask a question. If this is the way it's gonna go, which seems to me fine, we could possibly avoid the litigation that one of our neighboring towns went through on a sign issue?
I mean, I...
That's the idea, right?
Yes, because, I mean, I've been in towns where we've been sued and, you know, and what they, the attempt is to get the sign code thrown out and then you declare the whole code unconstitutional, you throw it out, and then people come in and say, okay, I can put up any sign I want now because you don't have a code. And so that's, but, and once again, let's not, you know, I don't think you're really going to have so much of that issue here, but it's, we, you know, my recommendation is that we need to make some changes, so...
I think so.
Yeah, I think, I think we're blessed, and I've discussed this with Brian's staff, we're blessed that we have no commercial property, so we don't have the billboard effect. One of the things I, I think, just personally, I think four signs on the front of a property is too many, unless you have a double frontage or you have two rightaways, but then I can see it. But I don't think we should be promoting what I call sign pollution on... I think I would, I don't know, I'm just speaking out loud, so bear with me. I think two is the maximum we should allow in any frontage, so right away.
I have a question. I saw in here that you were including the number on my property or the name on my residence as a sign?
Yes, but that's exempt. That's not part of this. It is.
Two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's right, it is.
That's the clarification.
Yes.
Good question. I also am concerned about the fifteen feet separation. I think it, I think we should more focus of a setback from the front and the sides, something like ten feet, rather than having, you know, as far, and obviously, there's gonna be conflicts with landscaping and that, but I think, you know, again, staff can look into that. But the other thing, as Tracy mentioned, these are all temporary. What do we have for time limitations on the temporary, the definition of temporary?
Well, that's also a little... Well, I think in our current code, we may have a couple of things. However, in the revised code, and once again, it's been a couple of years since I've kind of looked at this. I'll see if other people have been able to, I guess, adequately try to put in certain time limitations. But that's the, the problem with all of this is that when you lump all signs together and you treat them all the same way, it is very hard to get or to provide for time limitations, so...
But we have political signs are limited.
Well...
They did, they may not be now.
I thought it said when you put them in, when the event happens, or that was for yard sales, and then when the event's over, it has to come out?
Yes, and we've, you know, we're trying to do that and likewise, we can attempt to put in some language like that to say, you know, within so many days after the event. The problem, you know, just an example, is that...
It's not an event.
Let's say that if you're, I don't know, one of our senators, Marco Rubio, who I guess it may be a couple of years before he's going to run, but someone says, no, I know he's going to run, so I'm putting a sign out in my yard saying, I support Marco Rubio. You know, is that a political sign? Is that free speech? Is that, where does that fall on the scale of things? And that's the, that's one of the reasons that I think so many people have just come down and said, okay, we aren't even looking at that stuff. We're just saying, the sign's gotta be this, it can't be any bigger than this, you can't have any more than this, and then that's it. But we can certainly try to look at, you know, possibly, I'll see if there's some language out there where we can try to look at unlimiting certain types of signage like that, where we know that there is going to be a specific event.
I'm really not concerned about the occasional Marco Rubio supporter that might put a sign out in the yard for two years. I think the signs that we see most prevalent are homes for sale.
Yes.
And I myself like our small signs. Maybe they could be a little, little larger, but let's kind of have our thinking around what's our town gonna look like if the home for sale signs go up. And, you know, we're waterfront, million-dollar-plus homes for the most part here in town, and so those homes will be up for sale sometimes a year or more. So it starts to get commercially cluttered if we have a lot of larger signs like that. So I'd like to think as small as we feel is satisfactory to the other constraints we have.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, the forty square inches came out of that associated or adjacent community. And it was an uproar, I can say, I remember we started it. It was a lot of pushback, but it works, and yet you can't mandate the time, the time limit on that.
But why do we have to throw our code out if we're treating everyone the same?
Oh, no, I get that, I mean, I understand that. It's just, I just wanted to bring up that there are cases out there where, when towns have mandated incredibly strict sign standards and somebody has challenged them, and I'm not saying that that would happen, but somebody has challenged them, saying, you are infringing on my free speech rights, on my First Amendment rights. And because what you have said is, or what you're allowing me to do is not sufficient enough for me to, or for you to comply with my First Amendment rights, so...
Brian, is it possible to have a different criteria for free speech and for commercial signs? And a realtor's sign's a commercial sign?
Well, what I've put in the code here is that there's only, if you look at under the maximum number of signs under, I think it's the bottom of page sixteen, the number of temporary commercial signs per parcel shall be no more than two. That's when we were allowing like four, or provided that four would be allowed. So in that particular case, you couldn't have more, let's say that somebody was putting in a pool and you were selling your house, then the pool contractor would be one, and then the sell-for-sale, you know, realtor sign would be two. Okay, so you can't have more, you can't have, let's say, an architect is there doing some work, they can't put their sign up because you've maxed out at those two. So what this will cause me to do, if we're looking at scrunching the number of signs, then it may just be one commercial sign. But if that's the case, then, you know, you can only have one realtor sign, but, you know, but then you have to allow for the free speech process.
I don't have a problem with a pool sign and a realtor's sign. What I have a problem is a big pool sign and a big realtor's sign. So trying to see whether the, those fall outside of free speech issues because they're commercial purpose and we can keep them at a smaller size versus the others.
The only problem is that once you get into regulating, say it's a commercial sign, then you're looking at content versus free speech. So that's, that's when you get into content. Because the way that we had always, you know, the way that every municipality probably in the country had defined their sign code in years past was, it's kind of like, we aren't regulating content, but we have fifteen different types of signs. But within those different categories, we can't tell you what to put. And we all thought that was okay, but we found out that that's really not okay. So that's, that's the crux of the issue. And they say now you just have one, you know, one type of, you can't have different categories of so-called kind of temporary signs there.
Brian, does a real estate sign qualify as a commercial sign?
I, you know, I think it probably would, but that is something else that we can also take a look at too. And I mean, and that's the reason I kind of just wanted to start the conversation just to, because this has given us a lot to think about and to look into. So that way we can see, okay, where we can try to go and, you know, what we can possibly do. I knew the size was going to be an issue, so...
The other question I have on here is this, wall-mounted signs, fifteen feet in the air. Why do we have to allow wall-mounted signs at all?
I thought we had, well, I don't know, and that could be something else that we can look at, but I, I thought that there were some signs on some buildings that you had something that was more of, I don't think it was just the name, it wasn't just the building number, it may have been the name of the building or something like that, so...
I'm in fact, the temporary signs.
Oh.
Permanent signs is different, you know, something that, like you say, the name of the building, of a condo building. But I'm, I'm again, for sale, for rent.
And that would be more or less like in the window of a structure and it's kind of like, all right, you can't put it, it can't be higher than like fifteen feet. You can't put it in the, say, if it's a two-story structure, in the top window where you're going to get most visible views or something like that. It's gotta be lower to the ground. That's the reason, you know, that we kind of talk about that, because that really applies to just like a sign in a window. And that comes to kind of free speech. I mean, I, not so much here, but in other jurisdictions, I've seen places where people have, you know, signs in their windows espousing all sorts of views.
We're getting more and more vacation rentals. I have a couple in my neighborhood, my next-door neighbor, and I would hate to see a temporary-permanent-for-rent sign of, you know, whatever size we choose, four by four, plastered on the side of the house at fifteen, fifteen feet in the air, always there.
And I can tell you that that is, that that is something that I, you know, in other places that where we've, we've gone with a code like this, that we have struggled with that. Because that essentially would, you know, especially depending on how many units are there and if they're always for rent, the sign is always up. And there's, there's no way to get around enforcing them to take that sign down because there's either always a unit for rent or something like that, so... That's the issue, you know, that's, that's an issue we talked to, I know with, with staff in other places, how do we kind of get around this? And there's not a good answer.
My view is smaller's better.
What about the number?
Well, the, what's drafted here, as I read it, up to thirty-two square feet, and if they were four by four, that, or two by two, which would be four square feet, two-sided, then you'd have four two-sided signs on a property. That's a lot. I think, I think that's much more than is appropriate. And I think whether somebody chooses to two-side a sign and put it perpendicular to the street or single-sided, that should be counted as one of, as one. And then I think, Mark, you had suggested two is a good number. I feel more comfortable with that. If it's two one-sided signs, two two-sided signs, still two signs. I want to take that, oh, I'm gonna make four signs out of that because I'm single-siding them and, you know...
And we're exempting signs that might hold a building permit?
Yes, yes, those things don't apply. Warning signs do not apply, you know, they are not part of this. I'm trying to think of...
If somebody has a big window and they stick a sign in it, that's a sign, right?
What is that?
Someone has a big window on their house.
Can't stop them.
Right.
It's within their house, so they can put anything they want?
Well, I mean, what we would be doing though is we would be looking at this and regulating, I mean, yeah, I get what you're saying, you know, where it would be enforcement might be a little tough, but if they put up a sign that's in their front window that, you know, it's visible to the public that says something, then, you know, is that a sign? Well, yeah, I think it is, so, but it's, it, you know, it's, this is just a very difficult area. That's why I said that this is probably going to take several discussions.
You got audience? Oh, sorry, please, public, public.
Zoann Henigan, ninety-one Island Drive South. One of the signs that I think a lot of residents will have is monitored by Ocean Ridge Police Department. So one of the things I was thinking along the lines of what you were talking about is the rule of three. Make a three-foot, square foot sign, which is like our political signs, we're all used to seeing those. Allow three signs and have them at least three feet apart. Rule of three, everybody can remember that.
Sure.
Cindy Martel, forty-six South Harbor Drive. So I just want to clarify. So you can still, you can do a sign that says your free speech? Like, I'm a runner, I've been, you know, I run around. I've noticed one sign that said, just kidding. So people could actually put a big sign in their front yard and say whatever they want?
Well, that's free speech.
Okay. And then I was told, this is months ago, I had to take down my alarm sign. So how was that? I mean, I, I have to take that down? I took it down. So that was, you know...
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want some clarification. So what signs are great, but you can still, you could put it, I think it's just odd that somebody can put a sign like that that just says, just kidding and...
That's a, yeah, as Brian mentioned...
But then I had to take alarm sign down and I had to take my address sign down, so... Yeah, so I just want a clarification.
How big was your alarm sign?
It was a melon sign. It was a little alarm sign, but the police had told me I had to take... had to take it down, I mean, there were some issues with neighbors and stuff like that, I guess somebody complained about my sign, my address sign, so I removed it because I didn't want to get penalized, so, but, yeah, so clarification.
Cindy, did you know if it was in the right of way?
It was, um, yeah, it was in the step back, so, okay, so, but that sign that says just kidding is right up to the street.
Okay, yes, I...
But that's not, they have to be in fifteen feet.
Yes, this, this is regulating on your private property.
So like, everybody's alarm sign has to be in fifteen feet?
Well, no, no, I mean, nothing has been decided yet or anything.
Or at many fifty.
Right, I mean, this is just, this is, once again, this is just really addressing signs on your property, and if there's, and right now, it's my understanding, I mean, there's not signs that are allowed in the public right-of-way, but until, but once we come up with something here, then any sign that you would have, now, certain things, I think alarm signs or warning signs, things like that, can be treated differently just because of the nature of the sign, so...
So I could have...
Well, I, I, yeah, I don't want to comment.
So I've seen them close to the road, but I've seen them not so.
Right, I mean, that's something that we would have to kind of look at, I can't tell you off the top of my head exactly where, where that fits into the code and how we're addressing it in the proposal.
But these signs that are like free speech, they have to be put back, correct?
Well, if, if a certain, yeah, if this code is adopted, and if it's kind of like, it's got to be back a certain number of feet from your property line and all of that, yes.
Absolutely. Yes, everything has to be on your property, and one of the, one of the suggestions I made, which I don't know, apart from the limiting the number, was a setback from the front property line, I don't know how the rest of the commission feel about that, creating a definite distance, ten, fifteen, whatever, five, I don't know if anybody has a...
This is for RSF and RMM also, correct, it's for the whole town?
Yes, it is.
So RMM might have, especially in the south part of town, might have problems fifteen feet from the...
I'm just saying, I think it'd be, sign, sign pollution, as you drive or walk, if it's, if it's setback, it's not as offensive as...
I, I agree with you, I'm just saying...
I, I mean, it's open discussion.
Yeah, I think you helped bring a good point, but I feel like you do, too much of the, something is too much.
I mean, right now, the proposal is, there is no setback, it's, you put it right up to the property line, so, that's, that's just what's in the code.
There's a logic to that, because we have pretty significant right-of-ways in the town, if you went through and looked at real estate signs in this town, I doubt that you'd find any that weren't in the right-of-way. So even asking that to be moved back onto the property is a significant improvement.
It's a sick approach for me to eliminate signage. Sorry.
We're telling Nate where my flat roof is.
Yeah, I, I just said, it, it would be good for, again, the police, whoever, to be able to have some guideline as to, maybe it's five, and, you know, I just think we need to delineate an option.
Okay, well, based on that, then I can come back with some right, possible, you know, revisions, and, once again, this is just, you know, discussion, so it's going to take a little while to...
It'd be interesting to hear the commission's feeling on the number and a setback of some kind of size or distance.
I think the setback is good unless you're at the south end of town where it might not be sufficient.
If there's a hardship, yeah, I, I think...
And then, can you give variances for signs or exceptions?
You don't need departments, so why do you need a variance?
Okay, exceptions.
Just an exception.
Exception.
Question on temporary versus permanent, because almost all of us have what Cindy mentioned, an alarm company sign somewhere in the front of our house, is that a temporary sign or is that a permanent sign?
No, that would be an exempt from the code as far, or exempt from, you know, whatever the, the criteria is here.
So that wouldn't be counted against our...
No, no, it wouldn't.
Another question would be, I have a home for sale or for rent, and we're having a municipal election, and there's multiple candidates, and I want to put two candidate signs plus my for-rent sign up, am I then in violation because we limited it to two?
Yes, you would be.
And could that then get us in trouble on speech?
Well, no, I mean, that's, no, but because there's avenues there for, you know, for possibly, you know, I would, you know, look, I mean, the, the easiest way to not get us in trouble is to allow more signs, bigger signs, okay? That's, that's my, that's my standard answer there, however, I understand that we want to, you know, I get it, smaller signs and fewer numbers, I, which is what everybody wants, and it's just coming up with that number and the, the, with the location and those things.
Is it possible to create for a period of four weeks, six weeks prior to an election to have a larger number of signs, another example is, you want to put one out for the president, the senator, the congressman, the, you could easily, during the political time, see somebody with a half dozen different candidates, and we don't want to limit that, I mean, that's the one, that's the area where we're most likely to get sued.
I'll, I'll take a look and see if there is possible some, you know, some avenue we might be able to go down on that.
All right, are you confused, Brian?
Oh, no, no, perfect, perfect direction there, right.
All right, what have we got?
We've got one more.
Oh, generator.
Generator.
Please, somebody...
Do we have to?
Help me, I was...
Okay, this, I, actually, this proposed ordinance here is allowing generators into, well, let me see, let me kind of see if I can sufficiently confuse you all before Wayne then takes over, so, right now, AC equipment, things of that nature, are not allowed, are not allowed any closer than, I think it's ten feet into the setback area, okay. However, generators are not allowed in setbacks unless there is some language in here that it cannot, in cases where the accessory setback, or the setback cannot be reasonably achieved, which I'm not quite sure how, you know, I mean, I would make that argument all the time if I wanted to get a generator to setback, I think what Wayne is proposing is to just allow generators to encroach into the setbacks, I believe it is by, no closer than, what is it, ten feet, or five feet?
Five feet's appropriate.
Five feet to the property line to allow that to occur, and I guess it's my understanding that's the reason to allow that greater encroachment in the setback is because generators have further restrictions on, they can only be so close to your house, but I'll turn that over to Wayne and...
So generators can't be in front of the property, so they're restricted to the side and rear only. On a fifteen-foot setback, the generator's got to be located within that area, however, a generator cannot be closer than ten feet to the structure because of carbon dioxide poisoning, so we can't bring a generator that close to the structure as, as you've got with air conditioning equipment, which is located right outside the structure. So given that is the case, looking at the other generators that exist in town as they stand, I feel that we can do, we can live with the five foot from a property line, obviously it needs to be screened for view, and ten feet from the structure itself, which is any window or door opening.
My only concern with that is the size of the generator, because if you go to a generator that's going to be a whole house, or over, say, thirty KW, it has to be exercised once a week, and I think that's an unfair imposition on the neighbor, it's usually at the same time every week, unlike a Generac or a smaller, I don't, that's the only concern I have, because that could become quite aggravating.
Well, the, the good news is the newer generators are smaller, they are smaller for a twenty KW than what they used to be, some of the bigger ones.
Well, let's just use a house on the ocean, those are going to be in excess of sixty KW, that's a pretty good roar once a week to the neighbor.
How long do they have to run?
Twenty minutes, half an hour.
Well, I mean, I can tell you, I just had one installed, it wasn't, it was like a twenty KW, it's five feet, this is Delray, not here, and it is kind of loud, and every Sunday morning at nine o'clock, it goes off, so, and it runs for five minutes, and so it's like a loud lawnmower, I can tell you that right now, that's what it sounds like.
Can you adjust the times?
Oh, yes, you can, but, you know, I don't know.
Don't want to do it in the middle of the night.
Okay, I, just a concern, I mean, maybe there's a way, if they want to go that close, that they mitigate it with a hush cover or something extra or additional, that there is some...
Yeah, we're allowing vegetation here, not even a, a sound wall.
Yeah, so I, I, I think we just need to be heads up with that, Wayne, again, just to protect the neighbors.
And the, and the wall would not even count for the setback, you're, you're taking it all the way back to the face of the generator itself.
Yes.
So it's more, more intrusive than that.
Yeah, acoustic mitigation is what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, we've got a couple in my neighborhood that you can hear them from a block away.
There is, and, and just to share with you again, there are, there is criteria in other communities that it's a decibel rating, the maximum you can have.
I mean, what's your definition of reasonable? A gas line can be run as long as you want it, and the power cord can be run as long as you want it, so what you're saying is it's more convenient for you to put it in your side yard and bother me than to put it at the back of your house and bother you.
Well, that's what the course is right now.
Yeah, I would just, I would investigate the decibel criteria, because that's, that's an imposition.
And that if it were to be allowed in a setback like that, then it could not exceed so many...
Sixty decibels or whatever, the, the reasonable limit is, so. All right, and anything else?
Well, I, I don't know if you want to have public comment on this.
Oh, sorry. They are public.
I just have a question regarding the generators, that's just for new generators, correct, the existing generators are fine?
And any change also for the existing generators?
So if I had to replace my generator, I would have to move it, okay, so, and then I thought we were going to talk about the sheds, or is that already done? That's...
No, we're not done discussing it yet, so it's going to come on another agenda, we weren't ready to bring it up at this one.
Oh, okay, so it's going to be another planning and zoning meeting? Okay, great, thank you.
Don't stop coming, though, please. Sorry.
A new, is there any possibility we could, could consider starting the meeting a half hour earlier?
You took the words out of my mouth. This is a record for me right now.
Did we ask Penny about it, because she...
Yeah, she's fine.
I'm good with it.
I'm, I'm good, as long as staff is good.
We're fine.
And it used to be a date in the old days, but we only met once a year.
Yeah.
Okay, have motion to adjourn?
I'm good, I second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Nice job, Mark.
Well...